The other thing that brought me up out of my chair instead of sitting here watching a council meeting was I see that the attack machine is in full bloom. All of a sudden, the city manager all of a sudden now is on the list. Dane Slater. Campbell's been added to that list. A few of the people that ran that didn't make it, one of them. That's fine. We keep this stuff up, there'll be more people heading for the exits, and Troy will become another little brown spot on the I-75 going north. Now, a gentleman stood up here just a couple before I did and made the statement that Frank Evans, and I've got a copy of the Troy Times, December 29th, and they quote him, "On December 20th, Troy Chamber of Commerce President Michelle Hodges received an email letter from Frank Irwin, manager of government affairs at Magna Corporation, an auto parts manufacturer with 300 facilities worldwide, more than 100,000 employees, and more than $24 million in sales." Now, maybe he's been discredited by his boss, I don't know. I'd like to see that article or know where that speaker got his information. As far as I know, this has not been rescinded.
Mr. Blumenthal, 30 seconds, please.
All right. He drafted a memo to all Magna Group Presidents and our Magna corporate. Sounds like he's got some stroke. Strongly recommending that Magna International no longer consider the city of Troy for future site considerations. They're a multi-billion dollar, I don't have time to finish reading the article. We keep doing that, hard taxes will go up.
Thank you. That concludes the, excuse me, Mr. Stager? Yes, Mr. Savage?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. The machine up there on public comment is not working correctly. It would not take entries, and they'll need to be corrected. I can't help but think that a simple sheet of paper would be a way to handle it at a lower cost, and maybe that could be considered in the future. I came to speak against what has developed on the Transit Center. We find out this weekend in Troy that there were meetings behind closed doors that the rest of us didn't know about to try to bring it back. I find out that the rest of you on council, at least some of you on council, didn't know about these meetings. There took place at least two of them. There were meetings on December 22nd. December 23rd, City Hall was closed on December 23rd. Our new council has some great ideas. One is transparency. This is not transparency. People don't know what happened. They don't know what the plans are. The city manager's office told us repeatedly, "We have a drop dead date of December 19th." "We have a drop dead date of December 19th." They brought it up over and over again. And they said, "People of Troy, if you want to comment on the Transit Center, do it at December 5th or at December 19th of the city council meetings." Now we find out, well, no, that really wasn't the case. Did the city manager deceive us deliberately? Does the city manager lack ability to run the project? Will there be any repercussions for what happened? If the project were to continue, don't you need to consider to have somebody different handle it who knows what's happening? What is the current deadline now? What are the repercussions? Will there be overtime costs? What will the facility be like? Will the people who live there have a chance to find out what it's like? You need weeks of people to look into the plans. All seven of you need to have adequate notice for a meeting. You can't have it within three day notice. A lot of you work for a living. You need at least a couple of weeks' notice. Then you need to give the public a chance to comment on it. The earliest you could do this would probably be April or May to give adequate notice, like we had before when we found out that it had to be concluded by the end of 2011. It is a bad process, and it shouldn't go on. That is not to say that you're bad people on the city council. When Speaker brought up, you know, there are a lot of talented people on the city council, but you can't allow the process to continue like this. It is a project that will cost us a lot of money. The $31,000 figure, even to maintain a bathroom for 24 hours would probably cost at least that much, not to mention the other costs. Somebody said, "If you will build it, they will come." Didn't they say that in panic about the Silverdome? Look what a drain of cash that has been. Was that said about Sanctuary Lake? Look what a drain of cash that has been. Councilman Fleming mentioned it would be nice to have a Transit Center, but we really don't need one. The train service will be the same. There isn't a facility there to handle people. Wouldn't it be better to have the library open seven days? Wouldn't it be better to have our core services guaranteed than to build this? Regarding Magna, I know, Madam Mayor, I believe you've got the press release from Magna. The president, I mean, the employee, the chief employee of the Chamber of Commerce should have, if she doesn't have it, she should insist on releasing the press release from Magna on December 22nd. They said that Mr. Frank Irwin only spoke for himself. They repudiated his comments. They said they're very happy to do business in Troy. They're very happy to do business in all the communities that they're in, and as far as they are concerned, it is business as usual in the city of Troy. And one of the speakers tonight read that. That is from Magna's Troy office. It was a press release issued on December 22nd, and as Chamber of Commerce should let people know about it. We had someone from the Chamber of Commerce tell you that she lived on Investment Drive, or she implied that. Those of us who live in Troy know that. Nobody lives on Investment Drive. It's upsetting, the way the thing's been handled. We have very good things in Troy. We have some excellent people at City Hall. We have some very good people. This is meant to criticize people, but this is a bad process. We can't let it go on the way that it is. It's a money waster. Thank you. It's a money waster. Madam Mayor, you got attacked by, you got attacked pretty bad a minute ago. You never took any special interest money. You never took any labor union money or city employee money. The people who voted for you or wanted to let you be in office, that would number up to 74,000 people. Less than 10% voted for the other candidate or wanted to come out and vote. You've got more votes than anybody else on the council. You make a mistake, you admit it. You care about what you're doing. Keep up the good work. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stager. Mr. Savage? I noticed Mr. Savage raised his hand first. Good evening.
I thought I was signed in, Madam Mayor, but I guess it wasn't. You know, I should be surprised at what this latest development with the Transit Center, but I'm not because in the many years that I've been attending these meetings, every time the discussion or anything goes against the management, they either pull it off the table or else they find a way around it. And this has been, however, years and years and years, and I can come up with some doozy instances where they have done this. Anyhow, I think we, the residents of Troy, need to advise the media, in particular the local newspapers, who is running this city? Michelle Hodges and the Troy Chamber of Commerce or our elected officials? At the last council meeting, Troy Chamber of Commerce represented corporate wealth in the billions of dollars. If they were so sure that the Transit Center was such a good idea, why were they not prepared to invest just a small part of their personal bonuses? They would have paid for the whole shot. In light of the latest developments, I get the feeling that our democratic system is going down the drain. Okay, page two. On the agenda, I think, coming up is the Council Code of Ethics. In school, and that was many, many years ago, I learned the Golden Rule and the Ten Commandments. To most reasonable people, that should be good enough. I believe the 2010 revision was intended to be used as a tool to censure Mr. Harlan. The last two paragraphs in this revision are vague and subject to interpretation. For instance, many words mean different things to different people. I have used the word queer since I was in first or second grade, and this was before World War II. I used the word queer for probably 20 years or more before I knew what a homosexual was. And I will continue to use the word queer in any content that I deem appropriate. Now, having affirmed my right of free speech, I feel I must extend that same right to all my fellow citizens, including our mayor and city council. Now, in a related item, the day before our notorious December 5th meeting, in the USA Weekend, in the insert in the Detroit Free Press, December 4th, in the middle section, there was a brief article that everyone should read. Facts that young people, and I list young people as anybody less than about 55 years old and even 60. Because I recall these things that were going on 30 odd years ago, and many people don't know what these are. And I brought that article to the meeting last time. I intended to read it at the last meeting, but I decided that it would be better read in the quiet of one's own home. And that is the USA Today in the center section of the USA December 4th. And I would advise, before some of these meetings get out of hand, that everybody should read that, and it might give you a little different light on what is going on. Okay, next one. Rules of procedure, that's coming up. We waste time on this issue with every new council, and I've watched a whole lot of new councils.
30 seconds, Mr. Savage.
I can make it. I believe some improvement, they have different ways, it's always been the idea of stifling the public debate. I believe some improvements could be made, but I suggest, for the time being, leave it alone until things have settled down and you can focus on your priorities. Over 12 years I've been attending these meetings, the main problem has been the unpopular consensus issues that have been forced upon us, various management. You seven elected officials need to look for common ground, and I hope you can find it in this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chiraceros, Mr. Ross, or Dr. Ross, excuse me. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to have a word. I know I didn't sign up, and I'm kind of coming in late, but I just want to affirm one of the earlier speakers who expressed appreciation and respect for you, Mayor Daniels, and for all of our city council, for the discernment that you're doing about our future, and I apologize for any negative feedback that you've gotten or any disrespect. I would also like to say that I have a similar appreciation and respect for my fellow Troy citizens who came up here very, very prepared and very, very articulate and expressed very sound reasons why this train station is really a very poor idea. And I'd like to appeal to our council to reconsider, and particularly to Mr. Fleming, to vote against it and go along with the original vote and represent the best interests of our community. Business is hurting in our area because our citizens do not have money. There's no money to spend, and we have to look at what are some of the root causes of no money to spend? What are some of the disorders that we've been investing in? That our federal government, that wants to invest in this disordered process, has invested in in the past. They've taken our revenue out of Michigan, and then they've enticed us to get it back by investing in their brand of disorder. They have funded the breakup of the American family. So basically, the federal government has created a process under Social Security statutes that guarantees that anybody who wants to leave their marriage and family will be allowed to do so and provided the funding to do so, and that all of the power that exists within our government will be behind that person who chooses to leave their marriage. So, we have a pandemic here in the state of Michigan. It's very, very horrific of broken families, and the children are suffering. And their suffering is expressing itself in the form of horrific disorder. And you know what? I have worked for the past 30 years that I've lived here in Michigan in the belly of the beast, in the emergency department, and I see the disorder, and I see the suffering of the children, and we really need to put a stop to it. So let us not invest in a woolly headed project like this sponsored by the federal government, who has sponsored the breakup of all of our families, and let us, let an idea like this, if it's got merit, come from the ground up, from the citizens in the community. And let's everybody reach into their pockets and into their bank accounts and retirement accounts. And if they want to have a train station here, let them pony up some money and show that their heart is really in it with their wallets. So, again, I make an appeal to the members of our community, start thinking about the impact of the brokenness that we have around here. And one final comment on the homosexuality issue that seems to be coming up also. There's a lot of protests that we're discriminating and we're treating people unfairly and citizens unfairly because they have a same-sex orientation. I think that we should treat all citizens the same, the same rights, the same fairness, but we cannot treat all behavior equally. So, the sexual behavior of a man and a woman who are married together and who conceive children is not the same sexual behavior of a couple that's same-sex. There's a difference, and we have to protect the children. That's the thing we have to focus on. So thank you for your patience in listening.
Thank you. Mr. Chiraceros? Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Pardon my dress. By the way, I'm Nick Chiracero. I live at 6945 Little Creek Drive. I've been a resident of this city for 38 years. Pardon my dress. I didn't expect to speak tonight. I knew Mr. Fleming was not going to be here. Just wanted to come in. First thing I want to say is this particular council is not responsible for the loss of business in this city. They have not been in office long enough to do that. The prior administration is responsible for this. I didn't want to speak tonight, but then I was handed this. This is the DDA budget dated April 14th to 11. You people have the audacity to come in with a city transit thing when knowing this is here? Are you crazy? You're looking at $14 million in the red? The city ought to take you guys out to the woodshed and spank you. And this was done by prior administrations, not this one? You've got a lot of nerve. It's about time somebody gives you help. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Okay, we've got a couple of people that want to speak. I'm sorry, announce your name, please.
Hi, I'm Patty Cooper-Kerner. I live on Shirley Drive. Welcome to all of the new council members and good evening. I hadn't planned on speaking, but, because this is the first council meeting I've been to in a long time, but I have to say something because I don't understand what's happened to the city of Troy. It seems like the division in our city is getting wider instead of smaller. I am just astounded at the anger in our city, and as a council, as the new council and the new mayor, it's up to you guys to bring the city together, and it seems to be going farther and farther apart. I thought when the village passed and the library was saved, that everything was going to be fine, that finally we would be able to heal, and it seems like there is no healing whatsoever. It's going in the opposite direction. And the Transit Center now is the new issue, and it's like Troy is the object of the press's eye. I have, my husband and I have friends all over the country, and I have talked to a gentleman that we knew, that we do know, in Sydney, Australia, and our problems are in Sydney, Australia. I know a teacher that teaches at a private Catholic college in Missouri. Our problems are there. You know, the kids on the campus at that college talk about Troy, and it's sad because I talked to somebody in Sydney, Australia, who knows all of our business because they talk about it in Sydney, Australia. And this is not the way Troy is supposed to be. This is not the way any city is supposed to be. I'm a resident in this city, and I'm actually ashamed and embarrassed to say where I live because people look at me and they're, "You live in Troy? Oh, jeez, I'm sorry." You know, if we build this Transit Center, which is the new issue, who's going to come to Troy? Who's going to take the train and come to Troy? Who's going to do that if we build it, if we build the center? Who's going to come here? Who wants to come to Troy? I mean, that's something that everybody that's thinking about passing the Transit Center needs to think, who's going to want to come to Troy with all of our problems? And I'm shaking because it's just, it saddens me so much that our city is like this. So I hope you guys all come together and figure out a way to fix this.
Thank you.
Good evening. I hadn't planned to speak tonight, but Mayor Daniels and city council, I am thankful for this wonderful forum that we have in the United States, city councils, our state, federal government, where we can have public comment, the good old American free speech, the exchange of ideas, even on the spur of the moment, like I'm coming up here tonight. I did make some notes as we went along. But I want to thank you, Mayor, for your understanding of the role of government, for your understanding of the constitutions of the state and country, for your enthusiastic leadership and academic qualifications. Thank you for your leadership and council's leadership in our city's financial transparency by putting the city's check register and other financial matters online. Great job. Thank you for your leadership in having the Troy Library open on Saturdays. My grandchildren went there for the first time on Saturday in a long time, and they were thrilled this past Saturday. Thank you for allowing the people who come to the podium for public comment, a four, five minutes of speaking time, even when the list of speakers is quite long. That hasn't happened for a long time. I'm sorry that many have overlooked your outstanding qualities. Instead, they have focused on a weak moment in your recent past history. You know, I found that it's a choice as to whether you're going to be offended or not at something. I've been married for 44 years. We've raised three children. We have three grandchildren. There's a lot of offensive stuff that's taken place in our marriage and over time, but I found out as I matured and grew, it's a choice. I just found out a couple of years ago that there's a nickname that I'd used for my wife for a long time that she was offended by. And one day she called me on it, and I said, "You know what? I never do that." But it's going to take me a few weeks to refrain from using that name. I think it took probably six or eight weeks. I don't do it, I don't do it anymore. She'd tucked that under for a long time. I'm glad she brought it out. I'm glad she told me that she was offended, and I endeavored not to offend her in that anymore. I also wanted to comment, I wrote down, I did a lot of traveling during the Christmas Vacation, and I found a different scenario than what has been reported here. I was with family and relatives in three different states. There was not one that brought up the city of Troy or anything that you said or any council votes. They watch the news, they're on the internet. When I, they know where I'm from. I even brought it up in conversations at gas stations with strangers when I stopped for gas. They never said, "Oh, you're from Troy?" Not one time. Never. I also ran across quotes from our state and across the nation. Said Mayor Daniels should be commended. I wish we had more of her kind in Cook County in the state of Illinois. Janice Daniels would make a better governor than Rick Snyder. Just a couple. I know we don't have time for, there are many, many positive comments like that, Mayor Daniels and city council and management. On my street, every resident is behind you except for one household, and we kind of have known where they stand for a long time. Also, I wanted to comment about the funding. I've looked at your campaign finance report. I've looked at the campaign finance report of others who ran for council. Many of those funds that came from across the country were $1, $5, $10. Most of your support, by your financial report, came from the citizens of Troy. So I wanted to correct that misunderstanding that was mentioned here earlier this evening. Other people who ran also got those kinds of donations from as far away as Hawaii. So, no harm done, Mayor. Thank you again for the time.
Thank you. There was another gentleman that stood up. If you'd like to come to the podium, please announce your name.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Sam Crowell. I live on Locust Drive in Troy, 28 years. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for reconsidering the vote on the Transit Center. I believe that the silent majority is not here tonight. We've already ponied up the money through tax dollars to build this Transit Center. The money has come back from Washington. We send 100% of the money to Washington to get back about 90%. So when it's said that it's going to cost too much, it already has. We've already paid for this center. Now the problem is accepting it. I respect the people on the council here. I respect the mayor and your position. I believe that you've got to consider that a poor man never gave another man a job, and without business, we will have less jobs, less resources, less prestige, less pride in our city. We need progress and prosperity. That promotes jobs. It was said the other night that I-75 was built with federal money. Yes, it was, and where would we be without I-75? Well, I believe that building that Transit Center in Troy will help the businesses that stood here two weeks ago and asked and pleaded for council support because they're the people that bring money to the city. Our tax base is down. It will continue to go down if we are anti-business. I'm asking you to be pro-business. Build that Transit Center that will at least bring some jobs in for building it, a way to have transportation handy, less traffic on the highways, less trucks on the road because they'll be on the railways. What a wonderful opportunity for our city to shine. And you, the city council, has an opportunity to be pro-business. Please don't run business out of Troy. We need it. And thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I think that concludes the public comment section, and I'd like to be the first to thank everybody for the comments. They're very well spoken people here in Troy. Thank you very much. Counsel, would you like a break, a recess? Okay, let's have a five-minute recess, please. We'll reconvene at 9:30. We'll reconvene at 9:30.
I'll be happy to do that. In fact, under council comments, I was going to address essentially three issues, but I can just address the one issue and address the other two at a later time. The date of December 19th, I still believe, was the date for a council to make a decision in order to meet the requirements of the grant, which indicates that the project has to be completed by October 2013. I still believe that. And I think it's going to take an extension request and approval by either MDOT and/or the federal government in order to proceed with this project. I do know the city of Birmingham, not Birmingham, Dearborn, which is about three months ahead of us, is already behind schedule, and they're not going to be able to make the October 2013 date. I firmly believe, you know, it's not smoke and mirrors. I said it in December, based on input I received from staff and the consultants, and I'll reinforce it now. I think that at that point in time, that was the date that we needed to make a decision in order to finish the project before the end of October 2013.
Thank you, Councilman Slater.
Yeah, and I think I should have went first before that answer because I am the one that initiated the resolution that was to be brought forward today, not Mr. Zurlag. He didn't know that I was going to do that. So that was what he felt was necessary on the 19th, and he had no idea at that point that anybody would come back and revisit this issue. So to put blame on the administration is completely wrong. I'm the one that was approached after the 19th meeting and asked to attend a meeting with Councilman Fleming on the 23rd. I heard a date of the 22nd. I attended a meeting on the 23rd with Councilman Fleming and the HRC team, and Mr. Miller from the city was also there. And the only reason for that meeting was to see if, in fact, it was possible to get the project from $8.4 million down to the $6 million level that Councilman Fleming had asked for on the 19th. And let me just say a little bit about that. On the 19th, when Councilman Fleming amended the resolution to bring it from $8.4 to $6, I didn't vote in favor of that because that had just been brought up that night. I didn't get a chance to look at anything, and I thought it would be irresponsible for me to vote yes on that if I didn't even know if that would meet the state/federal guidelines or whether the project could even be done. And I still wanted a gateway project. So I agreed to go to this meeting on the 23rd. And the only reason for the meeting was to see if, in fact, it was possible to bring this project down to a $6 million level. At that meeting, HRC, the architect and engineer for HRC, indicated that they could take a look at it. They didn't know if they could, but they said, "Give us until," I think it was Monday, first of the year, Monday or Tuesday, first of the year, "Give us a week to see what we can do." Week and a half. Said, "Okay." And that's all that went on in that meeting, to see if, in fact, it could even be done. On Monday, their report was included in the packet tonight, and it indicated that they could do the project for $6.2, $7.2, $5 with a contingency packet, contingency, if you look in the paperwork, it had a contingency up to $6.9. Well, when I saw that, I knew I wasn't going to move that project, okay? With a contingency up to $6.9. And I knew that Councilman Fleming probably wouldn't agree to that either. So I contacted the city administration and asked them to re-contact the architect and engineer and say, "Can you do it for $6.2, $7.2? And that has to include the contingency, okay? And it has to meet state/federal guidelines, and it still has to be a gateway project." I was told by city administration, the architect and engineer took a look at it and said, "We'll do it." That's the drop-dead figure. That's the most it's going to cost. Everything is included in that. So in essence, that is what Councilman Fleming brought forward to this council on the 19th. But I didn't want to vote for it on that point because I didn't know whether it would work or not. Well, when I got the paperwork back, they told me they could do it for that. I said, "Okay, I'm going for it." So I drafted the resolution and put a cap at $6.2. The project will still be a gateway project, but there will be no cost above that. Then I started thinking, what about the operating O&M costs? Okay? I don't want this project to cost the city taxpayers. And I want everybody to understand that the residents are not the only taxpayers in this city, that business pays a lot of tax, too. I don't want any of the city taxpayers to be responsible for the operating costs. So I am currently working, along with management, to make sure that this city will not pay one dime towards O&M. And I'm absolutely confident, when this issue is revisited, I'm going to have somebody standing at that podium or standing behind one of these microphones saying, "We're going to cover all the cost. We're going to cover all of the operating costs." So this will not cost taxpayers one penny. Okay? When I heard that, I said, "Okay, I'm going for this." So I put it on the agenda. It's not Councilman Fleming's fault that he had a family emergency here. He would be here tonight, and we would be taking care of this tonight, and we would have another vote after listening to what happened. There was no shady backdoor meeting, no nothing. You saw the report that I got from HRC indicating what the cost would be. I put that in a resolution, okay? When Councilman Fleming has the ability to get back here, and I talk to him personally, he's going to be part of this resolution, okay? Because he's the one that proposed the $6 million, we came back and came up with a compromise, okay? This isn't the project that I originally wanted, but I learned a long time ago, compromise is what needs to happen if you want to get something done. So having said that, when Councilman Fleming knows when he's going to return, and I hope it's soon, could be this week, I think it's that type of emergency where we don't really know. I hope it's this week. But when I get a date certain, I will put it back on the docket. We'll discuss it again. People want to come up to the podium? I welcome your comments. I get hundreds of emails a day regarding this project, not just the 20 people that came up here to speak tonight. I probably have gotten 600 total, would be my guess. And I'm still getting 90% in favor, okay? I'd also like to address, if I may, what happened on the 19th, because I think there's some confusion as to what happened. When the agenda item I-6 was moved forward, the transit center, Councilman Teetz immediately asked to move Part B of the resolution, which called for the rejection of the Architect and Engineering Services, the MBOT rejection, and the federal rejection of $8.4 million. That was defeated by this table, five to two. So in essence, this council did not reject the federal funding, okay? The project was still there. It wasn't rejected. Then Part A, the Architect and Engineering part of that resolution, was brought forward. There was some discussion on that, and it was defeated four to three. So basically, we kind of were in conflict with each other. And City Attorney Bloom, if I'm missing a step here, please let me know, but we were going to have to revisit this issue anyways because of what happened on the 19th, okay? We're in conflict with each other. We never rejected the project. The only people that voted to reject the project were Ms. Daniels, Councilman Teetz.
Mayor Daniels.
So we were going to have to come back and talk about this anyways because we never rejected it. And Ms. Bloom, if I've said anything that isn't correct there, please address that, but that's what has happened up to date, to the best of my knowledge.
Mayor?
Yes.
I will just state that it is true that there were two negative resolutions, and positive action did need to be taken in order to cancel the project. So that is a correct statement. And I'm not sure if council has any other questions. I'm happy to address any other questions council has.
Counsel? Councilman Teetz?
Just a brief question for the city manager. Dearborn is three months behind. Is that in the construction phase, or is that in their planning phase, or are they just three months? three months behind?
I think I'd like to have Mr. Miller respond to that question.
If you're not aware, Dearborn's project is very, very large. It's an over $20 million project. And basically, they are just a little bit in front of us, and given the scope of the project, it is our opinion that they're just not going to be able to complete within the two-year total timeframe also.
Okay. Is it three months behind?
They are, I'd say, less than three months in front of us.
All right.
Okay. I got you.
Anything else?
Same question, I guess, to Councilman Slater. The 6.2 million, it sounds like you've very thoroughly thought this out. Is there a hard and fast plan or a plan if it comes in over budget at this point?
My understanding, I asked that question, and I can refer to city administration, but that 6.2 million dollar figure, there will be a contingency built into that figure, okay? So that it's going to drop down below that so there's a protection for us. Is that correct?
Mayor, do you have a question?
Thank you, Your Honor. That's correct. The process is that if the city council proceeds with the architectural engineering contract at some near future point, the next step is to hire the construction manager at risk, and when that happens, that firm or that individual gets a hard cap number, which, as Mr. Slater indicated, includes the contingency. So they would bid a project that would be less than 6.2 million because they need to have a buffer within there.
Councilman Teetz? Any other questions or comments?
Kind of, I guess this would have been covered later, but just to go through the play-by-play, I appreciate you kind of going through that. You had the meeting on the 19th with Hubbell, Roth and Clark, Councilman Fleming, and on the 19th, Hubbell, Roth and Clark, no.
We had a council meeting on the 19th.
You're right. We were all here. I remember that.
You and I were together then.
The 23rd, pardon me, on the 23rd. And at that point, Hubbell, Roth and Clark said they would come back with a different proposal within the first week or two.
Monday or Tuesday after the first of the year.
Okay. One of the things in the packet was a letter to Michelle Hodges about the Transit Center outlining how they were going to, how they proposed something. It was as requested by the Troy Chamber. I'm just trying to go through play-by-play. Is that from the December 23rd meeting or is that from?
They were part of the meeting.
Okay.
At HRC. HRC apparently chose to send that letter to Michelle Hodges. It was CC'd to the city administration, and I was called to see where the letter should go, and I said, "This all had to be funneled through the city administration." So that's where it went. Why it was addressed to the Chamber, I think, is probably because they were at the meeting, I would guess, but it funneled through the city. Mr. Miller can maybe answer.
Madam Mayor and Counsel, in the spirit of full disclosure, and since Mr. Councilman Fleming isn't here, on December 22nd, Councilman Fleming and Mr. Tagle, who is also a planning commissioner on the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce, came to the city manager's office without an appointment, and I met with them, and they asked permission to meet with HRC. And then I then referred that to John Zurlag, who then authored.
Sure, I'll take him there. I was in the Atlanta area during this timeframe and advised Mark that he would have to attend the meeting as well because I had a discomfort with the consultant meeting directly with the chamber and council members without a member of management there, and that Mark was to advise the balance of council, what was happening, as well as to give all of council any reports that came in as soon as they did. My brothers would have been to have HRC write directly to city management. But apparently, we received a copy the same second that the chamber did.
Yeah.
That certain members of the chamber.
Yeah, I'm only here to speak about what I did. If Mr. Councilman Fleming had a meeting on the 22nd, I was not part of that. I was asked to attend the meeting on the morning of the 23rd with HRC, John Tagle from the chamber, and HRC, and the architect and engineers.
And I'm asking these questions because sometimes people, they see smoke and they think there's fire, and I think in the, full disclosure, and so everybody sees the play-by-play, I think that's fair.
Absolutely. That's why I try.
Sure.
But I can only tell you what I.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't know anything about a meeting on the 22nd. I was asked to be at a meeting on the 23rd, which I attended, just to look at whether it could be done or not.
Okay.
There was no sense even proceeding further if it couldn't be done.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Councilman Henderson?
I just have a little bit of concern that, yeah, I know this thing started out somewhat north of eight and a half million a couple of years ago, and then Birmingham backs out, we build elevators, now tunnels, now we're at eight and a half million. We have a council meeting that we defunded essentially on December 19th because that was a drop dead date, and for a variety of reasons that, you know, I've talked about ad nauseam, I'm not behind this Transit Center process. But as soon as we defund it, all of a sudden, mysteriously, we can come up with $2 million more savings. You know, and I'm not one of those kind of people that, you know, I'm a bargain shopper when I shop for things in general. So I like good stuff. I like really nice stuff, but I don't want to pay exorbitant amounts for it. And it just seems to me that this project started out, you know, here, let's just throw this softball at them and see if they'll bite, and then all of a sudden, when we say, "No, well, hold on a second. Let's put it back on track by shaving another couple of million dollars off it." Had Councilman Fleming stuck to his guns and said, you know, "No, let's just do it for 5 million," and not gotten us to do the "Let's Make a Deal" program the other night, would we be sitting here talking about 5.1 million instead of 6.2 million? So I fundamentally have a real issue with, again, this project being about $3,300 a square foot to build a building. And I know there's other issues, elevators and railroad tracks and all that kind of thing, but how can we possibly shave that much money off this project? How are we negotiating these kind of things when we can just simply say no and mysteriously we get a deal lower?
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of council. I had the same concern. In fact, if you recall, unfortunately, I did not get a chance to talk to the architect or the engineer prior to the city council meeting. And when the presentation was made on December 19th, and the architect and engineer were asked, I think, point blank, I think it was either by Mr. Slater or Mr. Fleming, if they could do something less than 7.2 million, whatever that cost was, they both said no. I had raised my hand and had used the term Spartan. I said, "What if you were to look at a Spartan facility? Could you still, you know, could you come in at a lesser number?" And the response, again, and the record will indicate, was no, they could not, which surprised me when they said they could come back at a lower number. I spoke with them. I'll let them put this in writing as opposed to speaking on their behalf, but what they advised me in a subsequent conversation that when I came back from Atlanta, we had, was that they said no to the gateway project that included many elements, like a plaza and a brick wall in lieu of landscaping, and that when they were asked for essentially a project that would still be gateway, as Mr. Slater indicated, but would only include essentially the Transit Center and the bridge and the elevator, no longer a brick wall, no longer a plaza, that because they took those elements out, they could have less of a project. Now, my interpretation of Spartan means to take those elements out. That was the reason for my question at a public meeting on December 19th, but apparently they did not receive, you know, they did not hear what I had asked for at that meeting and came back at a later date. It indicated they could do a project for less money and still have a big gateway, just wouldn't include certain things. I'm going to have them put in writing what they've eliminated specifically and where the cost savings is. And since they provided a rendering that showed the entire, I'll call it gateway elements, I'll also see if they can provide something to show what is going to be excluded and how that would look as well.
Just to hopefully sum this up, but I appreciate the comments, but had three more of us voted on Councilman Fleming's resolution for 6 million, we wouldn't be sitting here today even talking about this. That would have passed, and we would have a $6 million project today, okay? In my opinion, that would have been irresponsible on my part because I didn't know what was going to, what was going to be involved in 6 million. So we could have done that on the 19th, and we wouldn't even be sitting here today. So what I did is, I think, we did our due diligence to find out whether it could be done at 6 million and found out that it could be and still keep the project integrity intact. And I'm basically bringing back Councilman Fleming's amended resolution that he did on the 19th. So you have to remember, there are state and federal guidelines for this project. You can't just do whatever you want to do, okay? I had to make sure that what, when we reduced this to six, two, that the state and the federal government were still going to be okay with this. And we ran it by them to make sure that this would be okay, and they said, "Okay." I'm confident if we start chopping more out of this project, we're not going to be able to do this project and meet their guidelines. So I think we did the best we can do. As I said before, it's not the project that I wanted to see. I wanted to see some of the green features. I wanted to see some other things, but this is a concession down to right around 6 million that was proposed by Councilman Fleming on the 19th. And it's still going to be a gateway project. I was told that. I'm confident it will be, and we'll see where it goes from here. But it's 10 o'clock, and I think we need to do some business. I'm sure when this is brought back again, we can have a further discussion on it, but I think it's time to move forward.
I think it's just fair at this point, and I think what, I'm sorry, wasn't it?
Counselor.
I think it's fair because you brought up the Spartan issue, and the things that they removed, that they said were not Spartan, maybe they misunderstood what Spartan means or not. They eliminated the electric vehicle charging station. They reduced the landscaping. They reduced the number of pole-mounted lighting fixtures. They replaced the decorative scored concrete pavement. They eliminated the heating sidewalks. They replaced, replacement of the proposed decorative security fence. You know, there are many others, but they replaced the green roof with a membrane roofing system, which includes the savings in the roof support structure, eliminated the harvest rain water reuse system. So I'm curious if that is indeed the Spartan. My definition of Spartan is a lot different than their definition of Spartan. If we're trimming those things out, and so before our special meeting, I'd like to have the city management, because I think we're at that point where I think that this is between the management and HRC, to refine what the heck they mean when they say, "Oh, we've trimmed this as back, as far back as it goes," because I don't think decorative concrete pavement and heated sidewalks are Spartan or two steps, you know, these are nice to haves, they're not half to halves. So that's my request, and I'm fine to stop discussing it, but very important to me before we have a special meeting or whatnot going forward.
We'll make that happen.
Does anyone else have any other comments?
Just one add. They reduced the building 400 square feet. They did, they reduced the heating and cooling from green to a regular furnace, so there's a multi-toolist there. It's not just decorative paving, so.
Very Spartan.
Yeah.
If we don't mind, I have also received hundreds of emails asking for my opinion on the Transit Center, and I have had problems with my email account, and we're going to address that at another point. But over the weekend, I wrote a position paper that I would like read into public comments. I have copies for everyone here, if Mrs. Bittner would like to pass them out. As a duly-elected mayor of the city of Troy, Michigan, I feel compelled to have my opposition to the construction of what is called the Troy Multimodal Transit Center Project read into public record so that the citizens of Troy, Michigan will have this information available to them for all time. The following information has been gleaned from documentation provided to me as mayor of Troy and from various published information found on the Internet. However, all expressed ideas, thoughts, and assertions are my personal beliefs that are protected under the First Amendment to the United States Constitution as a lawful American citizen. It is my expressed opinion that the entire project's business model is fundamentally flawed. The information that has been disseminated by the Troy City Management has been politically one-sided in support of this project. The documented cost to the taxpayer of Troy has been a moving target at best and purposefully understated at worst. The use of any amount of federal funds from a government that has increased the debt load on generations of Americans yet to be born by at least $5 trillion of printed money in the past three years borders on malfeasance, and the argument that it is our money that has been sent to Washington is naive when the truth remains that in order to get out of serious debt crisis, there has never been a legitimate, provable case where increasing the debt load of the many by accepting the use of the debt money by the few has ever resulted in an improved economic climate. And to suggest that the tax dollars that we send to Washington are simply being returned to us does not address the fact that our tax dollars are not even keeping pace with the interest that is accruing on the federal debt that has been accumulating for decades now. It is my greatest hope that cities across this country will follow the fiscally responsible leadership of the city of Troy and stop this spending madness that has gripped and is crippling our nation. Let us look at the history of Amtrak to start. According to statistics taken from the Department of Transportation's Federal Railroad Administration webpage, and I offer the webpage, federal funding for Amtrak's operational and capital grants has grown from $40 million at its inception in 1971 to $1.49 billion in 2009, and this figure does not include the $1.3 billion in capital funds appropriated for Amtrak in the American Recovery and Revestment Act of 2009. And this figure grew again in 2010 to $1.565 billion. Overall, Amtrak has used over $35 billion in subsidies. Does this sound like a project whose time has come or a project whose time has come to stop this madness? This is not to say that as a compassionate nation, we should not be mindful of addressing our responsibility to provide the least fortunate among us a means of transporting from a home environment to a work environment where they can participate in the great American dream of providing fruitful existence for their families by locating, accepting, and engaging in meaningful private sector employment. But let's be mindful of the big picture. If we continue to tax and spend on projects that cannot sustain themselves, we will hurt our ability to help others, let alone help ourselves. Even MSNBC's reporter, Alex Johnson, indicated in his article entitled, "Is Obama's Rail Initiative a Train to Nowhere?", dated November 7, 2011, that California's 2009 projected cost of $33 billion for a 220-mile line between Los Angeles and San Francisco has grown to a projection in 2011 of $98.5 billion, and that is before a single segment of track has been laid or a single station has opened. That is a cost increase of over $65 billion. Governors in Florida, Wisconsin, and Ohio have turned down high-speed rail funding due to wildly inflated bills, said Florida Governor Rick Scott. So, why is it Michigan's Governor Rick Snyder apparently is supportive of this local project? In his letter dated December 16, 2011, he stated that this will be a gateway to the intercity passenger rail system. Is he referring to the $22.5 million Rosa Parks Transit Center built in 2009 that has been reported to be closed periodically because the City of Detroit can't fund its operations and maintenance costs? Or is he referring to the fact that Amtrak has reduced its train service by 22% in 2011 due to ever-increasing budget deficits? Governor Snyder indicated that this $10 million investment would result in a return of $23 per Amtrak customer. That, to me, does not warrant the advancement of this highly speculative project. I reached out to Governor Snyder this past week, asking him to meet with me to review my opposition. My request for a meeting was respectfully declined. I will be sending a copy of this position paper to his office for his review and hopefully his official response. Now, referring specifically to the past two years, our city management has budgeted approximately $9.7 million to the Troy Transit Center. When challenged, management revealed that only $1.3 million of that entire amount was to be borne by the Troy taxpayers. In the context of debating this city's ability to keep its public library open without a tax increase, City Manager Zerlik then announced that the $1.3 million was no longer budgeted to the Troy Transit Center. Where did this money go? It's not clear. The fact is, from that time forward, our city manager management has insisted that not one dime of taxpayer money would be required for this Troy Transit Center. That is until recently, when all of a sudden, we were told that the ongoing operational and maintenance costs were budgeted to be approximately $30,000 a year. I might suggest that one union-paid janitor alone will cost more than $30,000 a year. I would like to ask how many bathrooms are planned for this facility, and can only one janitor keep them clean on a daily basis with a possible 24-hour operation, not to mention the entire building upkeep? On November 22, 2011, city council was presented with an estimated project costs memo from City Manager Zerlik, in which it was stated that not much of the design work for the bridge has been done, and so, a 36.8% of the total budget is anticipated to be most subject to change. The document continued by stating that the cost of the platform and canopy is unknown because the design is subject to Federal Rail Administration Americans with Disabilities Accessibility Requirements that have not yet been written. The memo went on to suggest that the city management was prepared to remove many green design elements with a stroke of the budgetary pen. Yet, we should know that there are always strings attached to government funding and that the above-mentioned ADA regulations that we are committed to comply with will no doubt necessarily be filled with mandated inexpensive green design elements that we will be forced to comply with long after we have set an imaginary and ever-changing cost estimate. We were recently told that we would be using a construction manager at risk, which supposedly means that any cost overruns that are not attributable to scope changes made by the city, or I would assume by extension, the federal government, would be absorbed by the construction company. This newly-presented concept of a construction manager at risk is in direct contradiction to Paragraph One of Section Four Cost Reimbursement of the Environmental Assessment for the Troy Transit Center Intermodal Rail Passenger Facility Oakland County, Michigan Document Prepared Pursuant to 42 U.S.C. Section 4332, 49 U.S.C. Section 303, and 64 FR 28545 by the Michigan Department of Transportation and City of Troy, Michigan, dated June of 2011, as presented by Mr. Steven Van Dett, Director of the City of Troy Engineering Department, where it states that the project costs will be met by contributions from the federal government. Federal ARA funds will be applied to 100% of the eligible items of project costs, not to exceed the $8,485,212 figure as set forth in Attachment A. All costs in excess of the amount stated above will be the city's responsibility. Let me repeat that quote, "All costs in excess of the amount stated above will be the city's responsibility," end quote. And is the federal grant cap going to be reduced to 6.2 million if we agree to a reduced-cost project? Or is this federal grant money still going to be available for the taking? In either case, how have we gained anything? The answer is, we have not. In a public comments presentation given on December 19, 2011 to this city council, Grand Sacra's attorney, Mr. Brian Amon, referred to and provided counsel with a copy of two letters in his public comments script. One of those letters was dated December 2, 2011. It was addressed to me personally, personally with a copy to City Manager Zerlik. I must tell you that I never saw that letter before being handed a copy of it during the December 19, 2011 council meeting. I would also like to point out that mail addressed personally to Mayor Janice Daniels was being opened up by city management without even a request for my consent until my discovery of this practice on or around the date of December 16, when I specifically requested that my mail be opened only by me. In this letter addressed to me, Mr. Gary Sacra outlined his company's concerns about the accuracy of the ongoing cost of operating and maintaining the facility. As I mentioned above, the $30,000 a year total operating budget would not be enough to support one full-time janitor. The following concerns were specifically mentioned in this letter written to me. There's no provision for security, there's no cost inclusion for sewer and water, there's no cost inclusion for trash removal or parking lot cleanup, there's no cost allocations for parking lot and building light replacement, no budget for fertilizing, landscape supplies, landscape maintenance, no mention of the substantial city obligation under the consent regiment for the shared cost of maintaining and operating the main drive located on Grand Sacra's property to access Coolidge and Maple Roads. Lumpsum building maintenance costs are woefully inadequate, according to the letter, and without proper maintenance, it would not take long for a transit facility to become an eyesore. In the same letter, Mr. Sacra indicates that the designs are incompatible with the Midtown Square Shopping Center, which is one of the premier shopping centers in Troy and is a significant taxpayer to the City of Troy. Their serious concerns and adamant opposition to this Transit Center proposal should have been given a higher priority hearing in the public square than has been afforded to date. In the above-mentioned letter, a reference was made to a second letter that was provided to council on December 19, 2011. This is a seven-page letter addressed to Mr. Mark Miller that is dated May 12, 2010. Within these seven pages are a myriad of concerns regarding funding of the project, whether it was readily available to the City of Troy, the changing nature and scope of the project, the impact on the adjoining shopping center, as well as the public roadways and intersections in the vicinity of the shopping center, general projection descriptions, including routes of ingress and egress for all forms of transportation servicing, visiting, or utilizing the Transit Center, the details of the construction activities, the preliminary site plan faced upon issues such as the conflict of operations with traffic flow that will interfere with the operations of the shopping center, and the turn radius from westbound Doyle Drive to northbound Doyle Drive, which is not adequate for buses, et cetera, traffic, parking, maintenance, allocation of expenses, insurance, indemnification, security easements, environmental, future modifications and remedies. What we have not yet seen is Mr. Miller's reply to the many legitimate concerns of Grand Sacra as outlined above. Does such a reply exist? If so, I would believe that it is absolutely critical to the public's awareness of the full scope of this endeavor prior to our vote on the feasibility of this project. Most recently, we were provided with a packet from Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark, that's the architectural firm, dated January 4, 2012, addressed to the Troy Chamber of Commerce in response to an apparent request to revise down the projected costs in an effort to sway council members to vote yes on a projected six to seven million dollar venture rather than an eight to nine million dollar venture. This is, of course, after one of the architects stated more than once that the project would be undermined with a $6 million cap. Nonetheless, the cover letter states that. "The goal is to not drastically reduce the project's scope such that key elements of the facility are lost or such that the resulting facility becomes unattractive. In addition, the facility must meet the functionality as stipulated in the conditions of the grant funding approval." At this point, I would like to refer back to my previously quoted information, such as California's 2009 projected cost of $33 billion for a 220-mile line between Los Angeles and San Francisco that has grown to a projection of $98.5 billion before a single segment of track has been laid or a single station has been opened, and the federal funding for Amtrak's operational and capital grants has grown from $40 million at its inception in 1971 to $1.565 billion in 2010. I will repeat a comment that I have made in the past, government money is not free. Stand by my words. The HRC cover letter continues by discussing the process, value engineering review. The letter states, "The value engineering review normally happens later in the design phase as more of the project variables have been defined." So, in understandable English, I take this comment to mean that we are getting a value engineering review before the project variables have been defined and before the regulations have been written with under-defined operational and maintenance costs in an economy where we fought for two years to keep our public library open without a tax increase. We are borrowing money from people who have not yet been born for a bus station that has no nationwide infrastructure yet built. So, it might end up being inconsistent with requirements if, in fact, this national infrastructure ever does get built. The letter continues by stating that the earlier preliminary estimates prepared for the project thus far were for budgetary purposes and for the acquisition of grant funding to assure that the grant amounts could fully cover all projected costs. Again, in understandable English, I interpret this comment to confirm what I have been saying all along, and that is that budgets are assumptions that are often developed to fit a particular agenda. So, now that it is HRC's agenda to lower the projected costs, they now just lower the budget numbers. Why is it that we could not get Manager Zerlik to just lower the budget numbers so that we could have seven-day library operations after the taxpayers agreed to a $3 million tax increase upon themselves? And are we to forget that the DDA is heading for insolvency simply because management has canceled all of the scheduled meetings of the DDA since my election? How does this fit into our acceptance of a speculative investment venture? I would also like to question another sentence in the cover letter from Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark, where it states that "The unit prices within the project estimate can be refined to lessen the conservative nature of the pricing due to past uncertainty." Excuse me. What is it that now gives Hubbell, Roth &amp; Clark this sense of certainty that was lacking before, and what exactly does lessen the conservative nature of the item pricing mean? Especially in light of the fact that later on in the packet, under proposed revisions, it states that "We believe the original conceptual design costs were conservative in nature." Which is it? Were the projected budget numbers developed to use up all the available grant monies, or are the projections conservative? At this point, who knows? It is a provable fact that all wealth is created in the private sector. The greatness of America is based upon the adherence to verifiable forces of capitalism, not manipulated by government forces, supply, demand, free markets, free men, and free labor. Our country's principles and our educational institutions have been under attack for many generations, to the point where a vast number of American citizens are not educated on the free-market principles that drive economic growth and development. Instead, they have been misguided into believing that larger, more intrusive governments at all levels are the promoters of economic growth. This Troy Multimodal Transit Center is one such misguided government exercise in the misuse of taxpayers' resources in the unsupported supposition that government projects create wealth. The truth is that government projects siphon wealth and destroy the ability of the private sector to enjoy meaningful economic expansion. At this point, I would like to summarize many of my concerns. This project's drop-dead date has passed. This project will expose Troy to financial risk of missing the completion date. This project has already been discussed for well over 10 years and has been voted down. It is wasteful and unnecessary. This project has had the contingency reserve stripped out of it? That is just plain fiscal irresponsibility. This project now contains revisions so rushed and forced that no one, not city staff, council, or the engineering firm, has any true grasp on what it means. This project's cost is an ever-shifting ghost, $8 million, $5 million, $6 million, $6.25 million, contingency in, contingency out. This is unacceptable. City staff has continued to provide unreasonable estimates of future maintenance and repair costs. This project has now been subjected to two council members interfering with staff operation, having met on city business with a vendor without any authorization or knowledge of the full council, and neither which have any engineering background or experience in the matters at hand. Approval of the engineering contract puts Troy at risk for over $600,000 should the project not proceed. City staff has failed to keep the full council informed on this matter in violation of past policy. What one knows, all know. And lastly, why have you violated council's privacy and opened our private mail? This is reprehensible and unforgivable. I must conclude that I have no confidence in our city manager's ability to continue to perform the duties granted him in this position. I would advocate for a seven-to-zero vote against proceeding with this ill-defined Troy Transit Center project. Thank you. Now, we can move to, there are no comments after, yeah, we've already had an opportunity to speak.
Oh, okay. Excuse me. Go ahead. I offered you a half hour of comments, yeah.
Point of order, point of order. Is that true, Ms. Fleming?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Because there are several points that were brought up, first of all, I'm not even, it may have been more appropriate to read it under council comments if you were going to read it at all, but again, because it was brought up, because there are a number of facts that are in there, I think that certainly it would be appropriate to allow persons to address a number of the statements that were made.
Sure. Madam Mayor, there are a number of non-facts in there as well, and I'll be responding to you in writing with a copy to all of council and the media.
Thank you. Councilwoman Campbell?
Just a couple of things. Obviously, this is your opinion, and certainly you're entitled to that opinion. And obviously, you don't want the Transit Center, that's very clear. But I'm a little concerned about a couple of things, and not so much the content of the letter, but I run a company, and I would never, in my wildest dreams, call my employees to a meeting and ridicule them in front of everybody else. I find this to be, just, you don't see where you've done that. You've accused them of opening mail, you've accused people, excuse me, you've accused people of having secret meetings, you've accused people of a lot of things in this...